First is to approve our minutes. Motion approved. Second, motion by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is approve for our reds voucher. Second, motion by Bob, second by Ted. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make the motion to move Adrian's to number one and then everybody else afterwards. Second, second by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Adrian should be a proud to move you up, you're up.
Hey Dave, just real quick, we got nine, so recognizing door, who's just regular slate?
Yeah, we're full, yeah, we're full.
We must catch all. Yeah, I'm gonna say, or, you know, for Ron to issue permits, whatever, will be, that would be on file, it isn't necessarily.
Any questions from anyone?
So, in, I was, I was not here last meeting, so just reading the minutes from last meeting and seeing how those are reflected on the plan. I guess I don't see that those comments were incorporated onto the plan. For example, the, a barrier around defined picking tables, a fence, split rail, or shrubbery, and so on.
There's a type shrubbery, there's box hooks, there's longer, longer than flat forest. If you don't have the one with the steel line,
Yes.
you probably don't have the decent one that you have at the front.
Yes.
And we did define when the effect, out during the road, turning corner, I would label that it has got the additions that I did in the plan to indicate that it may necessarily provision, additional study.
But you're, you're like, that's not, that's not. When did you drop that lot?
That, and I still have my same concern, if we approve that, then any parking area has to be paved. Can't let people walk, no, I know, I'm just saying, you can't allow people to walk on any unpaved surface for our code, and then we have a dining area that's unpaid.
You know, outdoor.
Oh, you're using it as a dining area? You're using it as a dining area? I just. And I don't know of another one anywhere. Everywhere we bump into, everybody's got a paved area with a fence up and something, this is the only one I've ever seen that doesn't. I, I just see it said on the scanner. That isn't saying everybody else's.
The bunches, I hate to do this, I think, from my standpoint, we have the table, it's, we just, the real plan. I don't know how I could go down. Yes.
I tell you what, can you guys defer on him? You've got a bunch of other things, I'm gonna try to go get into buildings, files, and see what I can find.
I got two copies, I just put them today, too.
You know, Arlene was on vacation. Building, building itself is impossible.
I know you've been swayed, and I, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, why don't you move to a second item, bring them back, this one's like, great stuff, yeah. Let's, let's do that.
So, I mean, it was a fair enough for us to go to.
What's the difference gonna be in the comments?
Need changes to the.
So, while I'm, I'm waiting for Bob to sign off. You, you, you said that you'd put some bushes along entrance, right? So maybe if you could, you've got your package, right? Alright, so could you explain to us, this will be our only care.
It still provides, instead of a field, there are, provide a solid separation and barrier. To be jumping bushes, hopefully we don't.
We, we talked about that last time, but my problem was that put down parallel to the driveway coming in. So we're using the curb on the, on the driveway and then you put the, the boxwoods across the front, but our drive opposite it.
Yeah, making, we kill the nine and one.
So the actual shrubbery is gonna go through the tree lines, the tree line system? You're gonna go between trees, right? With the boxwoods across the front, right?
I think that should go behind this thing. Now you're gonna be entire front yard, it's a whole patio. Unpaved.
Essentially, you have that.
I would call it open patio, because it shows where the seasonal pickings is removed. Boxwoods start out, you know, probably a lot of us have boxwoods, right? They start out, buy it, they're twelve, eighteen inches tall, and they grow maybe three feet, four feet, you drop home, and turn them off this season. Visually.
Look right back, start at Simperton Stadium. Look right back, start, Simperton Stadium. What they have. Let's see how that scanner does in the plane.
Any, any further discussion from any of the members? I'm, I'm drawing, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this, as presented on this, rise. Second. Motion by Bob. Second by you. Any further discussion? All in here?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thanks folks, I just look so long. So, this becomes our standard. Where do you go? Okay, well, so, our next is to, our next is to plan review board of the P D D legislation.
I was gonna say, Dave, just out of respect for, because you've got stuff you're looking at that's local law, local law, text. You do have item four, you have a, a, an applicant here tonight. Can we, can we respectfully move them up in the discussion now, and then deal with the laws and what they have? Well, I was gonna say, let's, well, let's make sure.
Sir, sir, what are you, oh, James, you, sir?
For the supervision on Fairway Lane and Fix Road. The zoning of the lot.
That's item seven or two. Yep. Well, so they, they emailed me before the meeting, asking to be postponed, their attorney could not make it at the meeting because of the holiday change, not having one, the meeting Monday. He had it on his books as Monday, it was scheduled complex. They're asking, they're asking to table, I've got an email, I am free asking to be tabled.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion that we move four to three. Okay. There's no three.
Why don't, why don't we simply say, we're moving number one to four. We're, we're moving revised within Commerce Park to number two. Because we already said number one, which was up. So, within Commerce Park, revised would be.
Well, we have somebody here for number two, don't tie them number one, that.
Oh, no, we're just. We, uh, Adrian's was, was moved to number one.
Yep. So now, the folks are here, the folks are here.
So I'm, I'm making a motion to move number four, number two, number one to number three. Number two to number four. And, well, a few properties will be mentioned to.
Somebody's here for number two. Someone's here. So they, they're gonna, just move number one, just show us here for number two. Move one to the end. We're gonna make a motion to move number one to, to number four, and move everybody up. So numbers, the next kind of agenda would be rezoning of Fix Road, sir, come on up. Sorry.
It's alright.
I think you can remember.
I can tell us what you're doing, real quick? Yeah, I'm Jim Hyland. I, property of two hundred and six Fairway Lane. What we're doing is we're buying a piece of land that falls up against our land. It's a hundred and forty feet going west, and the width of my lot, which is a hundred and ninety. Our neighbors, Artie and Tom, the fellow, are doing the same thing. Hundred thirty feet going west, and then the width of their lot. Our plans are to basically grow grass there, I mean, we're talking about bothering it and sending ours out there. The only thing I may do, because I don't have a riding lawnmower, is maybe put up a small shed in the corner so that I can put a riding lawnmower in this, like.
That's all coordination with the building department.
Their shed is just a, well, as long as it's ten or fourteen feet.
But there was someone here, if we were going through this process with the town, somebody had raised an issue that they thought we were going to build a large pole barn out there, which is not true.
Yeah, so, so the shed that's, that's on this drawing is really not part of the consideration tonight, because the severing and joining, and, and the portion severed and joined, changing the zoning, R one D, which is the deepest to which.
Yes. It looks like the shed is already. Well, that's, that's, that's my existing shed, yeah, that's kind of way on, on Mr. Boxer's property.
Right, right.
Instead of one of them, bought house.
Yeah, it's a whole other matter.
Understood, understood, yeah.
If you did wanna build a pole barn, that's something.
No, there was, there was a big issue raised through, you know, the department in the town. Why didn't you wanna buy a different fix like that?
You know, that is, I have a lot of questions.
Don't wanna do that.
I move with proof. I'll send that.
Motion, motion by Bob, second.
Motion by Dave.
I'm sorry, Dave, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set, sir.
Thank you.
Copy, you got pretty low, you asked to be tabled, so the table of all few for next, next meeting.
What, what should it, motion table?
Motion table, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is revised within Commerce Park. Hello, everybody. What are you doing, Dave?
Uh, just helping you to make some alternate technical. Corners, you can do these. I think some of it's probably for the trees. In the corner, far corner, on the roads.
So, what reading between the lines you have attended, that apparently got some outside storage needs, is that? Oh, no, no, okay.
Dave actually talked with me about it during the application process, and then, for whatever reason, it fell through the cracks, it wasn't included on the drawing. It's like, hey, I wanted to do this, Ron made the decision, get a, get a revised drawing in, get it in front of you guys. You guys know, it's how you wanna use your land, it's a sense you don't get to, so, I just pointed out.
I mean, it's basically, it's moving through the fence around the existing section, what is there?
Just, just stalling in the back section, that's all.
What is that, our back one?
Our back one, it's, it's, behind all buildings, really, there's a, we have forty foot sections, we'll be able to see drive and buy out, or, or, or there. And that's where I'll put that, that is. The slats that go on the fences, go on the, the locks out. Not the whole fence, just on the fence, aside.
This side comes to, I'm too cute, is it?
Or this side? So from, from, yes.
So the side is facing the ground, we're building, so basically.
I mean, it's a very limited.
See it this way, very, very limited at this angle. And we'll need to be able to see it, from here, just if you got out of that, that. They would peek that, so you're gonna slap that side, this is all against that other.
C I R.
Yeah, there are, and the other part is against the other, there is some green space behind it, or whatever that is. I don't understand, anybody have any questions? Motion, motion approved, motion by Bob, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all set, thank you. Thanks. Communications received, the trial. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're all too, the, the legislation. Last, the long range planning. They had come up with some criteria of what they were thinking about, and then, and our last meeting was tabled, and it didn't materialize, it didn't, that, yeah, from long range. But to my knowledge, they will look into the ten acres, sticking over twenty-five percent of green space.
So, as a summary, we have just a, an outline of what they're thinking of doing, because, you know, we start out by talking about having a minor and a major P D D, and then, those terms are never mentioned again. The information we have. It's confusing to me as to what the real description was of a P D D minor versus a P D D major, with the exception of the ten acre, can't be less than ten acres, but there has to be some other criteria that would.
What's the difference between the two?
Well, the, the, the long range was the ten acres, twenty-five green space, and the sunset clause, so you have a certain amount of time to put a shovel in the ground. Otherwise, your people, you, your rezoning revert back to what it was before you got. That was where they were at, now. This ladder that they sent out, what they sent out last meeting was canceled, so I, I didn't see this myself. Until, until our.
Well, I, you know, I, I think trying to differentiate between minor and major, and one maybe is primarily residential, the other is for part of the larger use. I think it confuses things. Um, I think we can maybe proceed with, because they have three to four recommendations here, so maybe we're just look at those as opposed to trying to figure out major, minor, and you know, who's on first base with residential and that.
Yeah, I, I guess, Bob, that, that makes some sense, what I was thinking about, you know, turning the clock ahead, at some point, we might have to approve something as a major or a minor P D D. And I don't think this language gives us the outline or the criteria to deal with one versus the other.
Well, what I was gonna say, just real quick, but if in the second paragraph, a P D D minor, which is detailed below, as well as a P D D major, a major would mirror the current code, the twenty-five acres being the minimum requirements, as lo, and, as well as allowing a residential only component. And then, however, the P D D major also includes the same automatic termination as the minor. Suggested changes for this automatic termination, both major and minor outline below. So, it looks like they're saying they want to keep the current code rules and standards for, under the P D D, call that the major, with a sunset clause added into it. And then, this minor, which is a drop in acreage and flexibility to use, but, but I don't mean is this law? I mean, these are the things they're looking at, obviously, comment on those, but then, you know, this is, we aren't adopting, or making a recommendation to adopt the law tonight, as much as, you know, are there issues with these things they're proposing?
Well, um, you know, if I may, I'd like to address four oh seven dash one twenty, section eight, purpose. Recommendation is to, well, you can read it, I mean, purpose on P D D. Res zoning land commercial, which is residential. I mean, it's kind of along the lines of what has already been, been promoted within the P D D for the last three decades. In the interest of the general welfare of the public, meeting objectives of the town, kind of, that's a plan. In terms of general language, you know, it, it makes sense. As to.
So, Bob, if you infer that that refers both to a major and a minor? That purpose?
I'm not, Dave, I, I wanna differentiate between major and minor, that P D D is simply something that is allowable in certain level of acreage and above, and, uh, any lawful use can be incorporated within the P D D. Presidential, commercial.
So. One of their, one of their big things was, was the sunset clause. Because right now, there are some P D Ds out there that have been out there for years, and nothing's been done.
Well, and let me, let me just clarify quick, that's something that I wanted to discuss with you guys tonight. The current way the code reads is the word may. Okay, and, and, you know, I distinctly remember years and years and years ago, talking with a, with a, with a former supervisor, when I was first, actually, when I was first joining the planning board, figured, okay, I know my stuff, I'm gonna go talk to this guy, and go, you know, something, and it was something. You know, that's been thirty years. Pete, how come, you know, may, this thing should go back to residential, and he sat back and he looked, he goes, look at all the work that's been done. And he goes, right now, it is the zone P D D. We're still working on the development concept plan, we're still working on those pieces. If we go, no, time's up, done, forget it, revert it back to residential, the next applicant that maybe wants to do something starts from ground zero, versus effort, work, record, history, studies, everything that has been done, you basically can still keep and use that. And it becomes a viable tool to further, further come up with a concept for the plan. So the word, you know, I strongly believe, you know, they should be able to look at, so may, to me, was an appropriate term. So may, to me, was an appropriate term. You know, it doesn't automatically kill something automatically with work done, processed, you know, and, and Pete's logic to me goes, okay, south point's PDD. What happens if somebody comes in tomorrow and wants to build a golf course there? If we reverted it back to R one, guess what, we'd start from ground zero to do a golf course. If we wanted to do it, you know, start moving the plan that way, we've done the legwork. So to lose that designation is a challenge, and I'll, I'll divert, you know, it, it's entirely up to you guys on our recommendation, but that was something that was.
I, I, I agree with the principle with what you just said, because. The other word here. Is shall, that's the recommendation. As opposed to may, so. You know, there's, there, there's a lot of gray areas in the year, you know, in the whole. Arena of development. And findings and planning and so on and so forth, in the way of project. Maybe not for twenty years, but. You know, beyond a two-year sunset. Uh, so make it hard and fast and say shall, I, I don't think it's.
Well, maybe a better way to go about this is to get the major and minor. I mean, if they just want to change the limit from twenty-five down to ten, so be it. And then include the idea of, you know, a sunset or a non-sunset law. That would be the changes that would be necessary. Well, well, not the major, minor.
Well, one thing that was brought up that I can't see here is that. You're doing your paperwork, you're to the core and the D E C, sometimes that gets tied up for years. You know, so your timeframe will run out. We had talked at long range, and I don't see it in here. Unless I missed it. They could come in and say, wait a minute, I've done this application. And it's not my fault that. D E C stayed four years for doing this, I need an extension.
Put a timeframe of ten years or something like that.
They were really, they were really trying to nail this down to. A timeframe, so. But you had to go on it through some. Oh, I follow that challenge.
Yeah, the major, but I really didn't, we wanted to rid of all together. And I'm sitting on that board, and the word may we used because we thought it was not for interpretation, which can also fall into the city. And I guess in a governmental seat or whatever, in our certain projects, and so we were worried, we looked at that word may, so that. Something can't sit on the books for twenty years and one. At one time it can say, well, you're done it over, and then the next time you say, well, no, we can go on to a permanent. So there was no set definition, but that's why we were looking at the word may, to come to pinpoint it on a little bit more. So that's why we were looking at that word. And the sunset thing, yeah, but we were looking at that, it wasn't said that it had to be done, like we understand, we understood things that you guys are saying, D E C could get. Backed up for four years and whatnot. Our, our position was, or our discussion for that. Um, they're kidding, the file can't be sitting there for four years, or nothing has been discussed with the town and the manager. Uh, you know. The engineering department doesn't know what's going on, we don't know that there's at least movement. It doesn't mean that the project has to be, you know, done, set, stolen, this and, you know, all of, everything there. It's just, there has to be movement, somebody didn't buy the property and ask for a PDD and they walk away and not look at it again for twenty years. That's what we're looking at the sunset idea.
So, I think that makes a ton of sense, but. Maybe we should write it so that after a period of time, five years, let's say. That they have to come back and give us a status report and tell us where they are, and then we can, you know, deal intelligently with authorizing another five years.
Yeah, that's what we were kind of looking at the three five number, I think we got there at one point. Um, is that same aspect, that same idea, come back, say this is where we're at, and we can extend it, but it's just that you can't just. You know, there's property sitting there and then it gets hung up, and we found that the history and some major properties that we have on the island. While, yes, it's cost, being cost effective. For them, but that's the problem with their project, if they have to come back and get things another fifteen years later, well, maybe that work wasn't done, but. A lot of stuff has changed within those fifteen years, so it's too bad, open the ball room.
Exactly, when you look at South Point, tons of that has changed because of what went somewhere.
The supervisor had asked us to look at this, this is why it's, it's here, that was why it was brought to our board, he had asked us to review this and look at this. So that's basically, I, I ended it in general. Um, that's where it was all coming from, is trying to get things moving, to try to get things a little more set in stone. And for things that's now that we sit there, a work to be done, and that just sits there, like, you know, to keep their resources going, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think part of this has to do with, you know, the, uh, the Radisson project, which is eleven or twelve acres or whatever it is, doesn't meet the. Twenty-five, but, you know, it kind of makes sense in terms of transforming that property. And, uh, so it doesn't meet the twenty-five, but it.
As far as I know, this was questioned, um, early spring, and we just haven't gotten to it yet. So I can't really say the Radisson was the reason why this project, why this was brought to us, it's just we were working on, um. The design standards, that you guys have seen some of that come through you, and then when you're working on some other things, so it's just. It's amended with the replay, Haven East River zoning. So it, I, I wouldn't say that this, from my knowledge and how it came to our, our, our agenda, had nothing to do with the Radisson.
Yeah, maybe it just coincides.
Yeah, yeah, I can see where, because I think people ask me about that, um, I think it was just some, you know, so just for the record, staying.
I, I would tend to put in this, our timing to the Red.
Yeah.
Well, but, you know, but to be quite honest, I mean, I've been talking, you know, in my role in the engineering department and dealing with these PDD projects for years. You know, we've been talking about the fact that, you know, the idea of trying to develop lands in, in town center, let's use an example, we want mixed uses and we want things to happen on each. But yet there's no twenty-five acres anywhere available to even, you know, so, you know, what's, what's wrong with that science? If we can't apply it, so the only place we're cheating and doing it right now is we've got two residential subdivisions, nothing but residential. You have White Haven Farms, which has yet to break any kind of ground or anything, it's the one that was around the solar field that we did everything with. And Gun Creek took ten years. It's three different housing types, big lots, little lots, medium sized lots, it's literally three different lot sizes in a purely residential. That took ten years to get off the ground. So, you know, I, that's why, you know, I cautious, what are we looking at for a project that we put in timeframes? Because we see, you know, like I said, we're now phase two, phase three, phase four, Gun Creek rolling, but it was ten years to get rolling.
And, 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 you know, the ten years had a lot to do with the economy. Had to do with, um, one of the, um. Equity interests, uh, getting into some difficulty and somebody else had to step in. And, you know, assume control of the process.
South Point, South Point has been, how many owners, Bob, you, you've tracked more of it, been more involved with it through the decade, but, you know, how many different owners and. You know, inactivity with, you know, wetlands issues and how long it took to get those redone, remapped.
Yeah.
And if, if, if I feel right, say one more thing, another thing, I mean, we're very, we've talked a lot about how a PDD should be a privilege upon our, the town of Grand Island. And is, if we give that or not, it should not be a given, or just because you have ten acres, that we should have this. It, it should really fall into that this is an overall betterment to our master plan, where we are right now. And how we're looking at things that have been built out within those last some years from there. So something twenty years ago might have went one way and we might have thought about something. But now we're looking at it and we, we changed the way that we want to move the top of the town of Grand Island or looked at things differently. So we really want to make a stronghold on the fact that even though maybe consider lowering it to ten acres. It's not that we're trying to make it easier to get a PDD, it's just that we can keep our options and maybe it might even give us more control in the long run. On some of these projects instead of making it fit into what's there, that we can make it fit into what we would like to see in our goals and our targets.
What about, uh, like open space, green space, now a ten acre parcel, you're thinking. Twenty-five percent of their land away. I mean, that should be adjusted on a smaller PDD?
We, we talked about that at long range and we were like, well. It's twenty-five percent of the twenty-five acre parcel, but now we're giving you a break saying you only need ten acres. So we're giving you the break from twenty-five acres to ten, we didn't feel we needed to give you another break of. Last screen.
But I think it's a different kind of project, like we said, this is something that's in the town center. You know, if they're able to string it together.
And granted, maybe that's a D R A, you know, if it's the central business district and, and you ask, many of them have a certain idea that maybe the green space doesn't need to be. I think that's what we're kind of looking for with bringing this to you guys, is to see, you know, like you're saying, Brad, in the, we like, obviously, green spaces are important to the town for that one, but. Maybe the center of this business district, maybe that does need to get forward a little bit, we can look at those options. And I think that's why we're bringing this to you as a founder, um, like. Dave said we didn't have our meeting last month, so. This is like our preliminary ops, you guys, kind of thing, our open discussion.
Would you say there's white nation farms and white haven?
Yeah, this comes straight out of where our place, body was rising.
Comes out, things been sitting there for.
Ten years.
And now it's the new owner has it.
Right, well, yeah.
So.
And, and. David has, right?
Right, so that's what we were trying to say at long range, that something's got a status report, something. We just can't leave it sit there, because currently, White Haven Farms, if I remember the top hole, it's a complete buildup. There's no green space there at all.
Well, because you're, you're, I mean, you're jumping into the requirements that were met back in the days of the river on PDD and a legal finding. But, yeah, I mean, you know, the thing that's really interesting, I mean, the PDD does give. You guys in the town board literally all of the control. You know, Mr. Developer, you want your project, it takes the rezone of the land. The rezone of the land is based on the plan, so that's, this entire group drives that. You know, otherwise, you know, something you don't get, you zone, as you said, betterment for the community, it isn't just a maximum density, it isn't just a, they do that. It, it becomes a harmonious thing where everybody's in agreement, this is good for the island.
Yeah, I think, I think if we, and we could probably all agree on one thing, it's the last sentence of. The recommendation under, uh, four oh seven dash one twenty, section eight, purpose. Which is just that, it's everything, you know, uh, Jen mentioned and, and we've been talking about, in the interest of the general welfare of the public, meet the objectives, town, grand, kind of, principle. And the ruling body is the legislative body, the town board, is ultimately going to make that decision. You know? Um, should it be twenty-five percent on a particular project and what types of uses? You know, uh. Should the town board allow on a particular, for a particular project, and so there's all sorts of. I think subjective, uh, things are coming into play.
You know, if you start with that idea of a major and minor, you could make a dividing line. You know, major, you could stick with the twenty-five percent, minor, you could drop to a ten or a fifteen percent.
Depending on the plan, right?
Yeah, depending upon the plan.
And the person, right?
Well, we also don't want people coming in here on ten acres, just making the smallest houses, highest density possible. So I think having that twenty-five percent in there restricts. Should somebody come in with a ten acre subdivision, it's way too dense.
Yeah, there, there, and there's another element of the zoning code, which is the cluster development. Which, uh, is the minimum of ten acres and it requires twenty-five percent. Uh, green space or open space. And the intent of a cluster development is where you have, you know, topographical features that might limit. What you could do with an R one D, uh, you know, ten acre parcel, for example. To make, for smaller lots, but you give up twenty-five percent of it for open space and that type of thing, so. I mean, a cluster development, uh, kind of de facto is. A minor PDD, you know, in a residential context. Already.
Which why it would make sense to have a minor PDD not include residential. Where would be more appropriate in the central business district? If we didn't have.
Well, and then that's, you know, once again, it's trying to get uses. Mixed uses that aren't necessarily mixed in our zoning code on the same space. Being able to be harmonious on that space, that, that's what we're running up to, is that our code is so prescriptive of use, allowed uses. And special use permit uses in each specific district that there's no crossover. And so this is building the crossover tool, the in transition areas, be able to develop things that have those multitude uses. We've, we've only, we have yet to see a true. You know, PDD mixed use development, well. You know, the ones that are painted down there are three types of residential housing. And, uh, White Haven Farms yet to be built is two different lot sizes, because they had half a dozen or so lots that couldn't meet the bulk zoning R one Ds. And you couldn't get an area variance for each individual lot, it's a violation of the old premise of being able to get variance. So that's why they went PDD. That's what, you know, we, we have yet to have, the, the first mixed use is gonna be.
River town, everything. Yeah.
You know, or heads up, you know, whoever breaks ground first, whether, whether South Point does get moving or not, or River Town, but one of those two. With the components they have may become our true first mixed use PDD. Where the intent of the law was written for.
I would say, I think the two years is way too restrictive. I don't think you're gonna get any developer that's gonna come on the island and get a PDD and invest plenty into it and then risk two years after he's into it. Uh, that the, uh, that the approval would be rejected. Um, I, I think it needs to be at least five years, uh, and it can't be that it's gonna be terminated automatically. Uh, it has to have, if you're showing progress, um, then it's gonna get, uh, continued. Otherwise, once again, I mean, I've worked on projects, it'll take twenty years.
I think that's where we're going with that. The idea was it's, it's progress or even a check in, but it wasn't that, and we understand how a lot of some of these projects. So it was just a big factor of that, now, as a town, as our community, we have given you this PDD, which on a certain level. On a, a, a developer's, it's, it's a gift to adjust and we can, we can work into our town so that now it's your job to keep us abreast of what you're doing. And not just sit on that, now that we're working on our, all the way around your project, and now we, we've done everything around it and we still haven't touched it in twenty-seven years. Like, it's, it's the idea of just checking off, you know, letting us.
So, so how about if, if we did it in a five year? And just the language to say maybe at the town board's discretion. And within a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty days notice, so you gotta give the hundred eighty days notice as well.
So where you have this sort of like a, a term renewal contract, sort of thing, where it's like, okay, after five years. Mister, whoever developer, you know, you, you're up for a, a renewal of this. Thought process, at least it gives them like a milestone that they could say, okay, my five years, that was time to check in with the town now, I gotta repeat this thing.
Because there's things that's beyond the developer's control.
Yeah, there's so many stars.
Just pull the economy into it, yeah.
Yeah, there's so many stars.
Two years.
I, I would even go more than five years, I'd go seven, seven to ten. For me, I mean, just for my.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, using, using example, wetlands permits, wetlands permits are good for five years. So, you know, if we start looking at that similar path, okay, is that exact land still viable? Okay, they've done their stuff, we're good for five years on a wetlands delineation, that much time lapses, okay, it's time to re, you know, boom, they're really, they're redelineating in five years. Maybe that, those two can run parallel with each other, you're going back to look at the land, okay, that then validates, is your project still viable at your update for the town? It seems an interesting way that those can mesh together.
Not only that, but, um, within that five years. Uh, you know, to avoid the, uh, termination of the, I think you gotta turn the show. So.
And you have the time permits, you can request extensions on.
Yeah.
Depending on the nature of what they are. I, I think one of the things, Ross, is turn the shovel, is just update your sewer permit. You know, file a permit.
Go get a reading for that?
I think with the, I think what they were thinking is. You gotta tell us something, like Jen's saying, come in and say, Daniel, okay, I've gone to A B and C. You know, this is, I'm waiting on this, it could take two more years, I need an extension. Yeah, you know. At least like Jen's saying, it's something like, but wouldn't you, that's just to sit there, I have, for years. Nothing's going on, we don't know anything.
Resources out of our town.
Maybe, maybe turning the shovel should be defined as initiating infrastructure.
Well, it's implementing the plan, yeah, it's implemented, plain and simply, it's, they, keep in mind, you get the PDD, and the PDD has a development concept plan and a detailed plan. The next piece is the IP and building, you know, building infrastructure, that's where, you know, I mean. The next piece is the IP and building, you know, building infrastructure, that's where, you know, I mean, we had, South Point had a develop, a, a approved development concept plan. And it never advanced per, you know, it, it stalled right there. Whitehaven Farms has a whole development plan, utilities, everything designed. They haven't pulled the VIP to build, and so, you know, that's, that's the piece, that you gotta start building something.
And, and the other thing is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think South Point, other than clearing a lot of the land.
So, South Point, South Point actually. By, they pulled the permit and they put the recreational path.
Okay.
That is, I, I didn't say it was an act of genius to actually be able then, because they had, if you remember the history, they lost how many wetland permits? Go five years, and how many years, we know, they've lost five or six delineations on that thing? So they were going to lose it again. And, and some, you know, somebody legally came up with that concept of, if we do, if we pull a permit and do the recreational path, we finally lock our JV in, they can't take it away. That's why you saw that recreational path happen, because the design components, the pieces of getting all of those other things together. The huge expenditure for the sewer structure, the improvements offsite that have to be done. It's just undaunting in an, in an economy that was crazy. And they were gonna lose that window again, if they redelineated again, you're gonna lose another ten, fifteen percent to wetlands.
Well, not only that, but with interest rates doing what they're doing right now, it becomes a little crazy as we step, so.
Well, could you tie into the submission of the site plan?
They don't necessarily have a site, I mean, you're, you're, you already have done the site plan, you, the development concept plan and then the detailed plan. That's done.
An approved conceptual plan.
In some instances, you get that to get the PDD zone.
I wanna go back and touch on something you said, you said something about. These plans are sitting, probably it's time when it's, it's sucking up town resources, how?
Well, my idea was is that, well, same thing, so something sit there for twenty years, it really does, because. Our departments are going out and redoing that, we're looking at things like, just what Bob obviously did, but sometimes it's all quite enough. That's how the thought was, that I'm the last person to ask you about how it all works.
Right, and I, I.
But it was a discussion that we had.
It's not really town resources unless. There's some activity on it, they own the property, I mean, if they have the PDD and it's sitting there, that's.
I understand.
It's no, it's no different than Mr. DeGlopp or only use A.
Just a conversation that was had then.
Yeah, I mean, they're the ones who tie up all their resources, if you think, how much money has been spent on South Point?
Right.
Millions.
We.
It's sitting there.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Brad, I'm just trying to pop on the half of our, our whole discussion.
But I just wanted to clarify, when you were thinking of how it's saying that town resources. I do think that the, uh, the recommendation under the, uh, termination of existing PDDs. Uh, you know, three years and no permit for structures which mean building, uh, that would be separate from this. The state, in my mind, from infrastructure, sewer water, roads, things like that. Um, I just think, uh. Pulling an approval, uh, one that's already been approved. I think we need to give an opportunity for them to come forward and show the same progress that we would do anybody else.
Mike, maybe. This is real law, the books that the town board could pull a PDD after two years. That they've never acted on.
That was this discussion we had, like, there's something in the books that, like, exactly, that I was trying to think of. That it can be pulled, but it's never.
Well, the, the word could is used. I mean, plain and simply, the word could.
Could.
Or, or, or verder zoning is, there's a could, you know, in the town board, they can sit. Plain and simply, they, there's, there's always a may rather than shall, and that's, those two words have significant importance in, in, in.
Do you think maybe that's why you put those times on there, trying to put a deadline on it, those may be the very wrong times? But I think that's what we were talking about, was that law, where it never really goes, it never gets impacted or nobody does anything by it, but at least there's some kind of definitive. Time frame in there of some sort.
I, I, as far as existing laws go, rather than doing, I think their clock should start at the same time. Is that any good one, so if there's an existing PDB, Whitehaven, whatever that is. If that's sitting there and this goes through, their clock starts, if that's five years, seven years, their clock starts, it's something that's really, really up.
And showing the same progress.
Well, they have, they have some other years to show that progress, right, their, their clock starts.
But, but I, I would still say, we're showing that still says, if after this period of time, the town board may elect it. I, I don't want an automatic kill death shot, it shall be go back to zero. There's two, that, those are just, you know, from, from just principles of development and time and, you know, we, we've come to a project we like. You know, I, I, I get the may, and the may is a very interesting one, because, you know, uh, a development standards of the way the island grows, that all of a sudden, you know, the way this little quadrant. Became something within our master plan. That, that thing that we were looking at just now doesn't seem to work. Because of what's grown up around it, if it's taken so long and the dynamics around it have changed. Yes, we should be able to look at it, but it's a may, not an automatic kill.
I agree.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I, I would agree with that too.
Strongly.
You know, and, and then, and then setting the criteria. As to what the, um, what the actions look like or should be. You know, the turning of the shovel and what is that rhythm? So we could define that. Somehow it has to do with infrastructure. That type of thing, whether it's five years or seven years or some other. Anything, I think, um. Sign on it later, the town board can say.
And I'll reiterate my idea that I don't think you need a major or minor. I think if they just wanna reduce it to ten, so be it.
I, I would agree with that.
Well, the only problem, this is then, what you mentioned about the change in the open space.
Well.
So we have a twenty-five acre parcel, twenty-five percent, and now we have a ten.
Yeah.
So does the ten stay at the twenty-five?
Well, I, I guess, I guess you'd say yes, Dave, because, and you still need the same amount of open space. Whether you're at, you know, fifty acres or ten acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, they go low.
Either, either at the twenty-five.
Either at twenty-five.
That's what the long range.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
Was there a need to differentiate that a minor would not be residential?
Then here, I said, a minor, but I thought the ten acres, they wanted to mix residential.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Not just ten acre or residential.
I think we just wanna get rid of.
Yes. So I think that's one of the.
Or less.
Well, yeah, I mean, under that intent in that first one, the use of the PDD for mixed zoning with, with a residential use only in a project is not encouraged. It's, you know, cheating around the book, you know?
No way of that.
Well, the, the five or six lot Whitehaven, I think, was cheating around the book. Gun Creek was an interesting one, because a hundred acre site. Three different housing types, townhouses, small lots, state, largely four, excuse me. We got four different housing types because of the area at a hundred acres. I mean, what, what a better use of the land than a hundred acres of eighty by one sixty lots? Because it was R one D zones. But, you know, to make up, hey, I need, I can't maximize my density. Because, you know, and, and I end up with, you know, because the lots, I can't get as, you know. With the, the one that we have was, I got six or eight lots that don't need R one D. Well, we'll, we'll go PDD with, so we can have those lots. Those kind of things, and that's where honestly, but, you know, this board and the legislative board of the town board are the ones that need to, you know, step on the throat and go, this is the project. No, you're not doing it. And they don't get the rezone. I think the PDD is wonderful, because it gives everyone sitting here at the table. The chance to move the project versus, it's in cookbook, I can have it, I'm doing it whether you like it or not.
So I guess we've made a bunch of comments and we're gonna send that off. Just, just one other, the, what did I do? The public road, uh, I, I, this has come up before, where the public road, um, needs to not, um. Create less than one acre sites, I think it should be public and or private roads.
I think, I'm starting to read that as that your existing public roads can run through. The land you propose for a PDD. Is that the intent, not your planned public road? I was supposed to reading it that way, Dave, well, that same way, but.
I was reading it as planned.
Okay, is that a, the, uh, the top of the second page there where it says. Uh, public roads shall be permitted to provide such acreage to the ten acres provided at least one of the particular land area, this portion. I'm reading that as you can have properties on both sides of the existing public road as long as you have at least an acre. I'm just, uh. On one side, it's supposed to make, is that the intent of that? As opposed to the road to the land cannot be any question, so that's kind of a. You can take this land less than.
Remember I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Part of the existing, right?
Well, the existing ordinance says that, and then they're just, all they're doing is just knocking it down to ten. It's the same statement, but it's just knocking it down to ten acres.
Yeah.
Once again, all it is, it's, it's an existing.
Interpretation of what that means.
I honestly.
What question it, the chart.
I, I don't even remember it being in the PDD code, but.
I think it was a discussion I had one free, because two roads that are private. And we got into some sections that were less than acre.
Well, gun, the, the private road is the townhouses. Gun, Gun Creek, Gun Creek, the road through. And all of the resident, the, the non-townhouse property is all on public road.
Yes.
The only thing that's not is the townhouse.
Yes, that were, that were created.
Right.
The public road.
The zone.
So. You know, it would be owner owns nine acres over here, an acre over here, and another side of the eight hundred.
Well, yeah.
You know, and, and wants to do this, uh, mixed use kind of a thing, or mixed residential or whatever. Um. It's like, you have to find a case to build a cruise course. I don't know where to go with that.
Well, I think it's like where it's, whether, to Sandy's point of, whether it's existing public roads or new public roads? And then are they differentiated from private roads?
Yeah, I, I don't see the reason for dictating that your proposed public roads can't strand less than may from one side of it. So that's why I'm reviewing.
Question is clarify the intent.
As if it's the existing public roads.
Clar, clarify the intent of that, even the exist, if you're either existing or asked proposed, please clarify the intent of that. Piece that we're citing out of our own boat, what, what purpose does it serve?
Can, can or should it include private roads?
I, I have, well, one comment, I think, uh, the twenty-five percent shouldn't be here, because it might need somebody to team in. And one of them built something on Grand Island Boulevard. And he's gonna have a red place, he's not gonna have a house, he's gonna have a red place, then a restaurant next door, a bunch of commercial things. It's gonna be ten acres, but you really don't need twenty-five acres. Twenty-five acres of residential. Bob mentioned earlier, no area that's ten acres, somebody can build. It could be anything. Why do you put twenty-five percent, uh, open space? I, I would eliminate that altogether. That, that further restricts you on Grand Island, that's how you can do it.
It's interesting, well, it puts, it puts the entire negotiation in the hands of the planning board and the town board then to get what's a palatable. Guy wants zero.
That's correct.
You know, I come to you and I go, I just wanna fill this with pavement, roads and boxes and I'm calling myself done.
Yes.
Yeah, there needs to be some guidance, you can't just have zero and then leave it up to a subjective board. Say, no, I would.
I, I do too. I think the push has been to have green space.
I, I agree with the twenty-five.
Things have changed from twenty-five, thirty years ago for what's, build this subdivision, streets, roads and houses and that's it. Well, we're looking for some green space.
Well, Dave, my point is, it might not need a housing, no, but it might be a bunch of drugstore. Theater. Twenty-five percent, that's two and a half acres out of ten. And that's what you're asking the developer, and he's gonna say, well, what do you want in the two and a half acres?
Well, there has to be residential.
What do you put?
It has to be residential.
Well, why does it have to be a residential?
That's what it says.
Well, I don't think that should be it either.
Must, it says must be commercial and residential mixed use home.
So they really don't want the ten acres. And I think Jason's point is, Brad, that's gonna be more than just apartments.
Right.
That's like mixed use apartments, so.
And there's no residential standard.
That's all change. A good percentage of our.
Well, I'm just saying that when the PDD did talk to us originally, that's. It was gonna be more than just one thing. If you really don't have a mixed use code. And the PDD. Would cover that. At this time.
Right, correct. It, it's giving the flexibility to develop a plan on an existing park, you know, constraints of an existing parcel. Without letting only A is allowed here, only B is, I mean, you're, Dave, you remember the days, I'll go back to Alphabet Soup, when we had, you know. The, the zone, we had literally individual, we had a multitude of zonings up and down the whole of ours, that TCH, RTCMU, you know. This lot was this, this lot was this, this lot was this, and those are the only things you could do on those lots. And, you know, we finally, years later, blew that up and said. You know, all these things are now allowed in the town center instead of this part's town center makes use this town center's identity, this stuff, you know. So come to us with a plan. PDD is expanding that horizon, it's heading further to that form-based code. Whereas, you know, you develop a plan, you work with us for a plan that benefits the community and you. And it's, it, it could be a multitude of different uses, depending on what you wanna do on the property, are they harmonious with each other, are they harmonious with what's around? Gives the flexibility, but everybody's gotta roll their sleeves up to get it.
Same thing with form-based, um, planning, though, it works best when you have a clean sheet of paper.
Definitely, absolutely.
Close to, you know, hydrologer, mixed bag of existing stuff, and you try to.
I agree. But a rigid cookbook. Is becoming too onerous with other restrictions. And, and, and you see people asking you for help. And we see in Zenit zones, and we see negotiations, and we see variances, and we see, why? Because it's just too strict right now, too hard to meet the requirement.
Times are changing, that's basic, times are changing.
Alphabet Soup is what we were used to as kids, and now that's gone.
Yep.
So times are changing, the town needs to change with the facts.
I'm sure we'll come back to this a hundred times.
Oh, you know, this is, this isn't long tonight.
Yeah, but thank you for the time you spent on it, buddy.
I think your audio will play much too many, they the group, if they listen to it.
Yeah.
And the town board's gonna hear this too from you guys, I mean, that's, that's the thing about having this recorded.
Yeah.
Or our leads trying to make this into some kind of hoax, but forget it.
Yeah, but the lengthy discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that's, you know.
I am.
Anyone else wanna make any other comments and we'll move on?
Thank you.
No, move on.
And moving forward, we're communicating via. Well, there's no report from the long range, where you just can't say.
Yeah. The only thing I would like to mention is we are training.
So, what do we need to really do with Taco Building?
Um, that was just a graphic, the safety boards, communications. I don't think you have.
Sorry, I'm not.
Where are we with training at? We always. At their. At our, for the year, let's, let's run up to. Still, we need to.
Don't be looking at papers like. Fifty minute thing next meeting. I'm, I'm store system every year. Um, probably, what do we have? Just the manuals we have? Well, we, we gotta do something, we gotta get a timing.
How about if they, um, ask a profit for, uh, just a review of the town roads?
It'd be nice to see a map of, yeah, town, county, state roads all on the island.
And what the plans are for, you know, updates and that.
How about you could send a word to, to him? Maybe just to know. How about a review of all the town-owned green space over there? How many acres do we actually have that is locked up and undeveloped? With, with more than.
Well, here we go, D I S mapping of all the towns. Green spaces, we have.
Or another one would be a direct department, just the review of all the recreational facilities that we have. Uh, I'm sure we don't all know them. And, you know, what their plans are for development future going forward.
There's a point where we can send out a couple others. Between, between the town lands and the schools. Well, in the state of one. Because I mean, every time a developer comes up, we hear from the community, all the green space, green space, how much do we actually have that somebody else?
Parks would be another one. That would be a mid very interest.
They just did a big parks presentation, like an hour, like one month ago.
You did?
No, it was, uh, Pete Marston and the Greenway, they just went through all the trails and other things. It was about an hour long. It's on our page somewhere.
Let's have Pete do that. Yeah, well, we got like four, four ideas.
There's three or four ideas. Hold something that holds three hours.
Thank you. Are we still recording?
Yes.
Yes. Moment, who made the motion?
I did.
Frank, I'm sorry, Frank made the motion, turn it to a second. Any discussion?
All fair.
Hi, hi. Folks, are, are you here for some particular event?
We're serving.
No.
Yeah, we were here for golf.
How did we do? I'm sorry.
It's a very ancient conversation.